Thank you very much Harrison. Okay announcements, let me get my little list here. The Town Hall offices will be closed on Monday September 4th for the observance of Labor Day. Oh my god.
Already?
Already. Okay, the regular council meetings are as follows. Thursday September 14th at 7:00 PM here in the Matthew Thornton Room. Thursday September 28th again 7:00 PM here in the Matthew Thornton Room. And lastly Thursday October 12th 7:00 PM again here in the Matthew Thornton Room. Paul, any other announcements?
Thank you Madam Chair. The summer concert series at Abbey Griffin Park has been well attended all summer long. There is just two remaining concerts left in this year's series. On Wednesday August 23rd we'll be featuring a band called Negative Two. This is a group of award-winning Merrimack High School students. And on Wednesday August 30th we'll be holding the final concert of the summer with a band Overdrive Horns. Each concert will begin at 6:00 PM in the Abbey Griffin Park. On Friday August 25th the Parks and Rec will be hosting a free movie night in the Abbey Griffin Park. The movie will be Sing which will begin at 7:45. This movie will be sponsored by the Merrimack Lions Club. The Parks and Rec Department has had a busy summer, has put out their fall brochure is now available online at www.merrimackparks with an S and rec.org. Paper copies are available at Town Hall, the library, and John O'Leary Center. The Community Development Department wishes Planning and Zoning Administrator Jillian Harris the best of luck as she moves on to a new position in the city of Portsmouth. Jillian's last day is tomorrow. The Department is also pleased to announce the promotion of Assistant Planner Robert Price into the Planning and Zoning Administrator position where he has been sharing duties during the transition period with Jillian before her departure. Robert has been with the town since October 2015 and is ready for the move to the new position. Also want to take time to say the town of Merrimack has several openings, so please check out all the openings in the town of Merrimack for jobs at merrimacknh.gov on the Human Resources. Thank you.
Thank you. The other thing I forgot to say under my announcements, Terry Biddle who's been a longtime Merrimack resident passed away on August 9th. She volunteered for the Merrimack crime line and was an active participant in the Executive Board at the John O'Leary Community Center. So we would like to express our condolences to the family and to thank her for her time that she has provided to this community. Okay, PFOA update. I do have one thing I do want to just take a minute and tell you about. I had toyed with the idea of having, requesting that this council consider that happens to be all the time Jackie, should I worry about it? Consider writing a note to DES requesting the possibility of testing for the new C6 air emissions out of St. Cabine. We do know that C8 was the problem, that is no longer being used. But C6, you know, would it be worth it to see if it's being under control to prevent it? So I ended up talking to Clark Fries in DES. I was lucky. He's always available, I could give him that, he doesn't run away from you. Anyway, so I talked to him about this and basically he gave me the following information. Basically they cannot require or complete air analyses on non-regulated emerging contaminants. They don't have the ability to do that. They don't have the authority. In fact, do you remember that House bill that Christensen talked about the air emissions? That would have provided DES with ability to do, to do air emission testing. But because the amendment was placed on it, the whole bill fell through. So that took away the possibility of DES to do it. So, so they can't do it even if requested and even if they wanted to, they can't do it because of those circumstances.
They can't require it, they could request it.
Correct, but they cannot, correct, and they cannot do it.
Right.
Right. Okay, very good point. And maybe that is something for discussion. He also mentioned to me that Gen X which is C6 which is the new product, that's the brand name, is manufactured in North Carolina. The Office of Research and Development is developing methodology to examine and analyze the impact of C6. And they're going to be doing some pilot studies and we're hoping New Hampshire's on the pilots. So that would be great to be able to get early on with that examination. So in terms of, that sort of limits what they're able to do, but I'm not sure if anybody wants to do anything with it beyond that. Yes, Pete?
Nancy, did Mr. Fries, is that his name?
Yeah.
Did he mention if they're gonna run new legislation?
He did, he did not mention that.
Okay.
Because it wouldn't be them anyway. Bill?
I would like us to see, us write a letter if only from the perspective that this is how we arrived in our current situation was because DES was unable, where they didn't know what they were monitoring coming out of the stacks at St. Cabine. The amendment that was tacked on to House Bill 415 which was the C6 bill, that amendment was a backdoor attempt to deal with the PFOA issue. So they were trying to get two bites of the apple. Had that amendment not got slapped on, that was a clean bill. It was, it originally passed the House by, and I looked it up, voice vote, passed by a voice vote. So I think it's worth pursuing, asking them to pursue it because one of the things that, you know, going to commentary last night, stuff that I've said, you know, publicly and the stuff that I've testified, you know, with this issue up in Concord. You know, I would rather not have the EPA in charge of doing any of this. I would rather have somebody local from our state doing this particular work. If it means that we need to do something legislatively to give them the authority, maybe not the tools, but maybe the authority to begin to put something in place, I think it's worth pursuing. And it's not just us that, you know, you're looking at other communities, Berlin, Claremont, you know, also have other types of industrial areas where smoke stacks are utilized. So there are other communities that may be impacted by this, so I think.
I'm not sure what you're asking.
I think we should write a letter to DES asking them to pursue it, I really do.
Pursue what?
C6, the, basically going up to 415 again.
But that's legislative, it's not DES.
Legislative, I understand that.
So it's a letter not to DES, it's to legislators?
Correct.
Okay.
I apologize for confusing.
Okay. Go ahead, Dan.
I'm confused, so I have a question.
Go right ahead.
I apologize for confusing.
Maybe there isn't somebody in the room who can answer this, but my question is, does DES currently have power to test smoke stacks throughout New Hampshire of any varying industry?
Air emissions?
So, right now DES is fairly useless when it comes to, they have no testing policy in place.
That's why I'm saying, that's why I'm saying legislatively it has to be.
To test anybody.
Yeah, when I came.
I'm not sure.
Air quality standards through smoke stacks.
Air emissions.
Air emissions.
Dan, several months ago when they came here to testify, one of the questions that I asked Deputy Commissioner Fries is, did you physically go up into the smoke stacks and actually do the monitoring up there for these particular materials? And his answer was no.
Right.
We actually look at what the product was being used and if, if the product that they were using was, was what was being spent, they were relying on that particular information to make a judgment as.
It was modeling.
They were modeling, they weren't actually going up, they were modeling that.
But to answer your question, as far as I know, no, they don't have the ability, authority to do that. But as Tom mentioned, you can request that they do it.
But whether, back in the day of the coal fire plants for Enbow with PSNH and so our DES department in Concord has never.
But again, this has to do with emerging, this is emerging contaminants.
Okay, focusing on, okay, gotcha, gotcha.
Very specifically.
Specifically emerging.
Now what other limitations, I don't know, but with this I know.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, Pete?
Yeah, I, I'm in favor of one of Tom's suggestions. I mean, let's ask, let's ask for a show of good faith, maybe the DES asks for a show of good faith to see if they can monitor what's coming out of that. And as well as Bill's suggestion of submitting a letter to the legislature, our representative saying can we resubmit this, this bill?
I mean, a member of our community, Representative Hinch is the Majority Leader. You know, that's, they've asked us, and I think this is probably a time that we should ask them to take, go after it again.
I think Representative Christensen was one of the authors.
That is correct.
Of that air emissions.
That's correct.
Okay, so what do I, so we have two different issues. A letter being written to DES requesting that they contact St. Cabine and request that air emission testing or even SOOT testing. There's more than one way I suppose.
I should add.
For C6. All those in favor of doing that?
Of asking them to ask.
St. Cabine showing good faith to do it. Okay, excellent. And the second request would be, would be a letter to the Merrimack legislators encouraging them to resubmit legislation related to, okay, everybody in favor?
Aye.
Okay, excellent. Okay, so what I'll do is I'll draft some letters and I'll send it out email. It'll make it short and sweet, I don't think it has to be dramatic, but basically just what we're saying. Okay, excellent. I mean, I feel, and I have for a while, that, you know, the Town Council, we have no authority, but we are advocates, so this is what we should probably jump up and try to do. Okay, I appreciate.
Do we need to schedule for the next meeting to actually approve that letter, to send it out? And I don't think we can do it through email, that would be a no public.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
I mean, you can send it out I guess for review, but I think we probably.
Would you have to approve it? Okay, so when I, I will send that, well, I'll send it out prior to the next meeting. We'll have it as the agenda item.
Okay.
How's that sound? Great.
I wanted to add another item I wanted to talk about.
Oh yes, oh yeah, Bill has something to say, he wants to make an announcement. And I was gonna do it and I said, no, you can do it yourself.
Well, I wanted you to, you can still do it.
Nope, you, you do, go right ahead.
On August 8th Governor Sununu appointed me to the New Hampshire Groundwater and Drinking Water Commission which is organized under RSA 485F. And the primary role of the commission is to provide advice as it relates to the trust fund for MTPE contamination and any other issues that may be impacting water quality in the state.
Cool.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So I'm really looking forward, that's all I know about it. I'm looking, well, the law says, the law says that they meet at least annually, so I'm hoping it's more than once a year, I really do. Just based on the issues that we have going on in Merrimack, I think there's a unique opportunity to share the concerns that we have in Merrimack at a state level so that other people can look at creating hopefully, you know, different, implementing different ideas or sensible solutions to making sure people have access to clean potable water. So I'm excited about it.
Excellent.
Thank you Madam Chair.
Congratulations Bill.
Thank you.
So you will be getting, I was gonna say, so we'll be getting interim PFOA updates from you, but it's only once a year, so.
Well, you know, I'm hoping, like I said, I'm hoping it's more than once a year, I really do. It's critical.
Okay, is there anything to be reported on the Highway Garage Project?
That would be me. That would be me.
This is what happens, we have to have the meeting.
That's true. Oh no. No, we have nothing to, we haven't met, the Highway Subcommittee hasn't met either, the Garage Subcommittee. And I will have an update the next meeting, by the next meeting. We meet next Wednesday for an update.
Excellent. Okay, comments from the press are public? No. There are no recognitions, resignations, or retirements, appointments? You guys are pretty well all set there, should we just have them go ahead? That's okay with, right, they, I mean, the Eagle Scouts, yeah.
It's up to you. Trust me.
I know it is. You've already sat there, so we're gonna let you, without exception?
Not a problem Madam Chair.
Okay, we're gonna allow the proposal and I hope the other recipients don't mind. 20 minute, look at, now smile, say thank you to the nice man. This is the proposed Eagle Scout project at Veterans Park submitted by Parks and Recreation Director Matt Casperius who is not here, but he doesn't need to be, it's just, was provided by him. Eagle Scout candidate Harrison Faust from Boy Scout Troop 424 would like to build a memorial at Veterans Park to remember Admiral Forrest Sherman, the highest ranking naval officer from Merrimack. And the Fausts are well-known here, hi, older brother is helping.
Is Harrison gonna be a future rat?
Nope.
Nope, okay.
Go right ahead Harrison.
He's waiting for his resignation.
Okay.
You could be introducing yourself.
Oh, you could be introducing yourself, there you go.
So, my name's Harrison Faust and first of all I'd just like to thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak here today.
Can you pull the microphone please?
Okay, sir. So, what am I gonna be talking about? I'm gonna give a little introduction, a little bit about myself, background on Admiral Sherman. I'm gonna talk about the project that I want to do, what I'm proposing. Then I'm gonna talk about the cost and how I'm gonna make the money to fundraise it and build it. I'm gonna talk about the timeline, how I'm gonna get it done and when I want it done by. The next steps right after this if I get approved today. And finally at the end I will have time for questions. So I'm a life scout and an assistant senior patrol leader right here in Troop 424, right here in Merrimack. I am also going to be a sophomore at Merrimack High School. I am on the cross-country team, the lacrosse team, and the robotics team. My advisor, Mr. Brian Stevens sadly couldn't be here tonight, but he's been helping me along the way, providing support and his knowledge. My goal is to erect a memorial to Admiral Sherman to remember him and what he did and that he came from here. The reason I'm doing a memorial is because I feel like having someone so important from the town right here should be remembered throughout the community. And when my brother did a memorial himself, it really had a really good impact on the community and I'd like to have the same if not better impact myself.
Competition's a wonderful thing.
So Admiral Sherman was born right here in Merrimack. He went to the Naval Academy, he served in both world wars. He was a four-star Admiral. He was very decorated, he received the Navy Cross and the Purple Heart. He had a class of destroyers named after him as well as two individual destroyers. He also had an island, an airfield, and an athletic field named after him. So my proposed project will be a 3D race silhouette mounted on a backing. And on that backing there will also be a paragraph, give or take, about, information about him that he is from here and what he did throughout his career. The silhouette and the backing will be held up by two four-by-four granite posts. So that's a superimposed picture of where I want to put my memorial, right by the flagpole.
I need to move so I can see.
Go right ahead.
I'm just moving so I can see.
Yeah. So, along with my project, I am also open to the idea of moving the Eisenhower ash to somewhere where it can get more sunlight or even be, grow better and survive. So that is along with my project, you can see it's right by the flagpole and the other memorials that are there.
Is that the stick that's in the background behind?
Yes.
Behind the boat?
That is the Eisenhower bush.
And what's the significance of that tree?
Well, it remembers one of the President of the United States and he was a very, he was very important and he was a very great man. And I feel like getting that somewhere where it can be very significant will be great for the town.
Who put it there?
I'm not sure.
I think it was put there almost 10 years ago or something by.
You need to turn on your microphone.
I think it was planted there something like 10 years ago just in remembrance of, by, you know, in remembrance of veterans by either the Legion or the FFW, I can't remember.
Oh, okay, thank you.
So I actually went down to the Autodesk Workshop in Boston because we have a assistant scout master who works there. I talked to the team in the workshop there, they have a lot of cool areas that you can build and create different things. And I'm actually gonna, if I purchase the material which is the plan, they can help me build it and put it together and do that silhouette so it can come out really well. Sadly due to age restrictions, I can't physically go in and make it myself, but I can be there knowing each step of the way what's happening and I can supervise it. So the estimated cost for the project is gonna be around $1,700.
Wow.
For fundraising, I will be doing bake sales, there are car washes, there are many other ways that it can get done, but the main traditional way usually done is bake sales. So my timeline, I had my final plan and what I wanted to do done in June. June 21st I presented to Parks and Rec, they sent me here, now I'm here presenting to you and I, if I get approved, I will be going to my troop committee and hopefully I can get those approvals done by the end of the summer. The rest of the approvals on top of that, I want to have all done in the fall. Once I'm all approved in the winter of 2017, 2018, I will do all my fundraising that I need. In spring of 2018, I will want to start the construction of the memorial and hopefully finish it by Memorial Day 2018 and I hope to have a dedication ceremony for it. So the next steps from here, if I get approved at Town Council, I will have to get approvals from the Town Committee, or the Troop Committee, sorry, and the District Eagle Board. And I need to get pinpoint prices to hopefully get more exact on the design and exactly what we want to do, more of the specific stuff. So I want to say thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight and thank you for listening. I'm opening up to any questions that anyone has.
Any questions, Peter, and then Jackie.
Harrison, when you came before Parks and Rec, I was seated, you did a great job by the way in your presentation. I did ask you, you still thinking about reaching out to see if the Admiral has any family?
So, I've done some looking, it's tough, I haven't really found anyone directly, but actually my mother just hit ancestry.com and we're gonna see if we can try and use that to look. I, I've looked it up, I've gone through a few websites, I haven't found anything directly, but I'm still gonna make an effort to try and find someone if they're related. Yep.
Jackie?
Yes. First of all, this project is excellent because first of all it's at Veterans Park where I think that these memorials should be. And since your brother, it was you who did the, Lester Langley's reproduction?
Yeah.
Because that looks wonderful, it turned out great. And secondly, I wanted to name the memorial room after him. He's, he's I thought be by far the most eminent product of Merrimack. Most towns don't have anybody approaching his stature and bravery, never mind that he's a war hero to boot. So I am just, I just couldn't be more pleased with this project.
Thank you so much.
Anybody else? The only suggestion I might have is, you might try to contact the Navy. You know, literally, you know, they're just like the Navy recruiter, who would I write to, who could I contact and tell them, you know, it's an Eagle Scout thing, I'm sure they would like to capitalize on it as well. And is there any way, you know, it's advertising for them?
Yeah, it is a great idea.
And would they by any chance because of that have any way of connecting to any family? Nothing to lose.
I'll definitely check that out.
And they might make a donation, you never know.
Or come.
Or come.
Sure.
All those things are possible.
It's definitely something I'll get on top of.
Yeah. Okay, any other suggestions? Tom?
I'm gonna presume that you're working with the Historical Society and whatnot here in town to try and understand.
Yeah, so one of the founding members of the troop is Mrs. C, she's.
Oh yeah.
Yeah, Mrs. Krieger, sorry.
She's the walking, she's the walking historical.
So I, yeah, my only suggestion is that you continue to work with them to make sure that what you do put on the plaque and whatnot meets whatever guidelines and requirements that they would, they would suggest for the town and that we'd all be real thrilled with it.
Okay.
So, thank you very much for your efforts.
No problem. Good job.
Okay, now do we have to take a vote on permission? And do I, don't need to prove, we do, right.
Madam Chair.
Now, did you have paperwork with you sometimes to bring it and sometimes they don't?
Yeah.
He does have it, he will.
I, yeah.
Okay, in the future, go ahead, make a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that the Town Council approve the project proposed by Eagle Scout candidate Harrison Faust from Boy Scout Troop 424 to build a memorial at Veterans Park to remember Merrimack native Admiral Forrest Sherman, the highest ranking naval officer from Merrimack.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, second by Peter Albert. Okay, any other discussions? Saying none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, none. 7-0-0, nicely done Harrison.
Thank you.
Good job Harrison, congratulations and good luck.
And I look forward to that opening just like I did with your brother and proud dad sitting there too, so, good for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
You can probably get all that off of the Merrimack TV.
He wants some immediate gratification.
I can be the best immediate, at least I can show my wife because she's too nervous.
Oh no. She's already.
Tell your brother.
Yes you are.
There's a local writer by the name of Richard Pease, P-E-A-S-E. He actually wrote a book about.
Oh, they sure do.
Richard Pease, P-E-A-S-E.
Okay, let's go back to our agenda. Under appointments, annual review with the zoning board of adjustment.
Take care, good to see you.
With Chairman Patrick Dwyer per town of Merrimack, Charles, Section 6, D6. At least annually, there should be an annual review with the zoning board of adjustment. This agenda item is to highlight the board's significant actions, current projects, anticipated actions, and to raise any concerns that council should know or could act upon. Good evening.
Evening, it's kinda different being on the side.
It is different, isn't it?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair and members of the board. So in 2016, we had 12 regularly scheduled meetings. I'm not sure if you have the information in front of you, but we heard 48 applications for variances, special exemptions, and equitable waivers. There were no requests for rehearing or appeals of administrative decisions. And we had only one application variance withdrawn. Currently, we have five active members on the board. We have one alternate and we have two vacancies for alternate positions currently. So we generally sit a full board which is, which is good. And it's good for the people coming forward for variances and special exceptions that they don't have to worry about deadlocks or their petitions not going through. There is really, I don't think there's really anything pressing at the moment to discuss with council regarding any changes that we foresee or recently the state passed new laws regarding ADUs which makes that process much easier for citizens of Merrimack to construct an ADU without having to go through the whole petition process with Town Council, I'm sorry, with the zoning board. So that, that's been, that's been a benefit and that's been in place for about, I think about a year now. It's been good to see a lot of companies coming to Merrimack and starting to see the reuse of existing properties that have left, that have been vacant for a period of time, so it's nice to see that those are getting used as well as some new projects that have sprung up. One in particular is a storage project that I think is going in place, the storage facility going in place down by Fallon's Furniture location.
There's a lot of storage area.
Yeah, it is, it's a, it's a self-storage area that's going in. Actually the architecture for it looks, it looks pretty interesting the way that they're doing, they're doing it. And actually the work that they're gonna be doing, which is one of the things, excuse me, I like about the. me, I like about the project, is they're gonna be taking care of some rather rough, swampy areas that have gone, have been just stagnant there for a while. So, and they had a very good presentation on that. Citizens of, other than that, I mean, it's, it's, any questions that you have, keep it short, sweet. It's, it's been a good year and we, next, actually, this month, we have our elections for officers, so.
Excellent. Short, sweet, and uncontroversial.
No.
For now. Any questions by the council? No, we don't want to change that. We like peace. None. Well, I thank you very much and thank you for allowing me, Bush, cause I could add you.
No, that, that project, by the way, looks awesome.
Yeah, it does look awesome.
It looks like that's gonna be a really, really nice addition to the, to that park.
I agree.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Patrick, thank you for your work.
And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Your involvement. Okay, public hearing. Don, you might as well come on down. Come on down, Don. The Town Council will conduct a public hearing to consider the acceptance and expenditure of unanticipated funds from the state of New Hampshire through SB thirty-eight, anticipated additional block grant funds, in the amount of four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and forty-five cents, that will be used towards various road infrastructure projects as prescribed under RSA two thirty-five, colon, twenty-five pursuant to RSA thirty-one, colon, ninety-five dash B, and Charter Article eight dash fifteen. Now, the specific uses that are going to be discussed is going to be presented during, under new business number four. So this is, I believe, Paul, is really the acceptance of the funds. Is that correct?
Yes. What, what we're looking for is, just like any donation or unanticipated money, the council to approve the money and approve the expenditure of the money. And then later on in the, the new business agenda, you'll hear what we're gonna spend, spend the money on.
So go right ahead. We probably already just said it all. Sorry about that. Go ahead. I did.
Yes. It's exactly what we're asking for, is to, for you to accept the unanticipated funds of four ninety-nine, three thirty-eight, forty-five cents.
And the council did get the list of what the distribution was. Follow it down. Yes, Paul?
For the members at home that don't know what SB thirty-eight was, it was a, a bill that was passed by our representatives up in Concord to allow for the surplus that the state had as of June thirtieth to be used by town, local towns and communities. They put a stipulation on the bill saying that it has to be used for infrastructure needs. So you can't go out and buy a police cruiser or a piece of equipment. You have to actually use it for infrastructure, roads, bridges, sidewalks.
And wasn't there something about, and it can't be an infrastructure that you already had money for?
Right. And it cannot supplant anything that you had in your budget.
Supplant, that's the word. Yes, supplant. Cannot supplant. Yes, Finley.
Thank you, Don. I was just wondering if you could tell me how they determine, is based on population? Is that how they pulled the numbers together?
I believe so.
There were a number, there were a number of ways they do it. It's, it's similar to how they come up with the highway block grant that we get every year. It's the same, based on population, based on size, based on valuations. You value, you value your population.
I, I don't need it tonight, but at some point, I'd like to have a little bit better understanding of that formula, 'cause it, not that it matters, I'm appreciative they were getting this, so.
We'll get, we'll get that for you.
Okay, Dan, and then Pete.
I had a similar.
Excuse me, Tom.
I had a similar kind of question. And then scanning the list, for people that, there's a list with all the towns and cities in New Hampshire, and it just, coincidence perhaps, but Bedford, London Dairy, Hudson, all have around the same amount of money that we're getting. So whatever the formula was, as I'm looking throughout the list, Merrimack is getting four hundred and ninety-nine. Bedford was.
Four eighty-seven.
And Hudson was a little bit less, four sixty-five.
What's London Dairy?
Uh, London Dairy was five nineteen.
Yeah, 'cause their population somewhat less.
Yeah. So it's just interesting that those, that half a million dollars amount seemed to spread over towns that's similar to size and, as our own.
Pete?
Don, is there a deadline that this money has to be expended by? Can it be encumbered? How, how's that gonna work now, once we accept the money?
The, the legislation has made it non-lapsing money.
Which means what?
Means that it, it won't lapse at the end of the year. A lot of the communities were, worried that they weren't gonna be able to do their infrastructure projects, 'cause they're on a calendar year. So the legislation put non-lapsing, which means that it can go from year to year. However, they urged, or should I say strongly suggested, that you try to spend it as much as possible by year end of your fiscal year, whether that's December thirty-first or June thirtieth next year.
Oh, they'll take it back. So spend it fast. Tom, you had a question?
I, I wondered if we could get a little more clarity on where this money's coming from, where it originated, why there might be a surplus at the end, end of the year and do, just some more background for where this came from? Anybody?
Well, as far as I know, because of the budget, they had, they, it was a combination of the budget allocations and the funds. They got more funds than they anticipated.
Funds from the federal government?
No, from the state and.
Yes.
Revenue, revenues, employment taxes, B T, business profit taxes, interest and dividends taxes, those types of revenues that the state has, they, they got additional revenue versus what they were budgeting for, and plus they had some appropriation savings.
And so there was.
So it's like our unreserved fund balance that we came up with every year, they had a surplus.
Surplus. Instead of using it, they decided to.
Pass it on to.
Pass it back.
Well, I mean, that's great. But why it doesn't go back to taxpayers is a little surprising. And so I'm, it sort of is indirectly.
Well, I think.
But, you know, a lot of people will complain, the government takes money and then it finds a way to spend it. When this way, they're at least spending it down at the state, at the town levels.
At the town.
Then rather than, you know, on a memorial in Concord or something like that. But it still seems a little odd to me. They're constantly fighting about not having enough money. And yet suddenly they have, I don't know how much this adds up to, but it must be quite a bit.
Oh.
If so many towns are getting a half million. That suddenly they have this money to pass out. It's just, it's nice.
So basically, they're saying they collect.
Thirty million altogether.
Somebody's collecting.
Thirty million?
Yep. It's added up on the back of the sheet. Thirty million.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Interesting.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Don slash Paul? Okay, could I have a motion, please, to accept and, sorry?
Did you open the public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. I, I've really been good about the public hearings too.
You have.
Tonight I blew it. All right. Can I open the public hearing at seven thirty-nine? I even have open and close of my notes, but didn't pay attention.
Come on, somebody's gotta talk.
Okay, and I'm just waiting for the clock. Okay, is there any? Okay, line up, one at a time.
Don't stomp on each other now. Come on.
Okay, I'm, that's it. I'm gonna call it. Okay, I'm gonna close the meeting at seven forty. Oh, and close the public hearing at seven forty.
Madam Chair.
Thank you for the reminder, by the way.
You're welcome, Madam Chair.
Now you can make a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that the Town Council will accept and expend the unanticipated funds from the state of New Hampshire through SB thirty-eight, anticipated additional block grant funds, in the amount of four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and forty-five cents, that will be used towards various road infrastructure projects as prescribed under RSA two thirty-five, colon, twenty-five pursuant to RSA thirty-one, colon, ninety-five, hyphen, being Charter Article eight, hyphen, fifteen. Furthermore, that the town manager or her proxy be authorized to sign whatever documents are necessary to accept and expend.
Motion made by Bill Boyd. Did you have a question?
Second.
You want a second? Second by Finley Rathhouse. And before we vote, you have a question?
Is this where we spend our money and then put in for?
Sitting in our bank.
Sitting in our bank.
They.
So we're not being reimbursed, is what you're saying?
No, it's not reimbursed. It's actually, we actually got the money upfront. They cut the checks about a month, not a month ago, but the beginning of this month.
And we'll get our half point on it?
We'll get a little more than a half a point now.
Dan?
Thank you.
So it occurred to me, let's just assume it all goes to paving. Does that mean the paving season can be extended and we'll pave more roads than anticipated?
We're gonna find out in the new business number four.
Okay.
Pete?
You know, I'm, I'm actually, and I've reached out to Kyle with Eileen's permission, but I'm hoping that there's a couple of other things, other than just paving. There are some issues in town that I.
I think there's one in particular they're gonna talk about.
Yeah, that and, you know, a couple of these other things that I brought up for discussion with the town manager, so.
Absolutely. Okay, any other questions? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Seven zero zero. Okay.
Can we take up item four while Don is currently seated?
Gee, I don't know. Might, might as well. Do you mind? You're the only one sitting in the back here. Lieutenant Leveque, do you mind? Are you being jumped over here? He's smiling, so he's, okay, if we. Okay, number four, potential road infra, well, you know what? This is gonna take a while. One, this, his is gonna take two minutes. So, thank you, Don. Appreciate it. Okay, legislative updates from state reps. There are none. Town manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Staff expects work on the renovations and construction of the former Shaw's Plaza to begin in the coming weeks. As the project has now received final approval from the planning board, specific tenants are not known at this time, but the department will announce them as soon as we are, we are informed and able to release the information. They put up a sign at the Shaw's Plaza, and there's been a lot of discussion about who's coming in. We do not know who's coming in.
Right.
The only ones who know who's coming in is the company that is signing the leases for that, that business area. But just know that construction will begin shortly on updating that facility.
Any timeline on, like.
Honestly, I do not know. I've heard.
I'd like it six months, a year, whatever.
They wanna get it.
Just curious.
Soon as possible.
I think they talked to us and they had a reasonable timeframe to do the work, but I don't know exactly what it is. But they're planning to get in there, get the work done and get it filled, 'cause it's costing them money on a daily basis.
But like winter, you think it'll be open come December?
I have no idea.
Yeah, okay.
Depends on when they get started and how much they really wanna do.
Yeah.
But they're talking about building two restaurants in the parking lot of, of large, full-scale sit-down and a drive-through.
Right.
So that's gonna be new construction and, and infrastructure out there. And then they're putting a new facade, new facade on the building. There's plenty of parking in that lot right now.
Well, you build two restaurants. We'll see.
Well, one of them's a drive-through. I mean, it's, it's not a sit-down restaurant. Anyway.
Well, I think of Downby Loews. What's that restaurant that's up in front? That doesn't take up that much parking space.
There's a good example, the Texas Roadhouse in front of the Panera Bread Plaza on one oh one A. It's the same thing. Every time they do this, every time they put in a restaurant at Chili's in the middle of a parking lot, and then you go, and then you don't go back. I've seen it happen. I've experienced it myself, 'cause I don't cook, so I eat out a lot.
And you don't go back because there's no parking?
'Cause you can't park your car.
Oh, okay. Well, that's their problem. They.
Oh, I understand.
They get told that every time.
But the planning board allows it to happen, and I just think it's silly, you know? They, this is gonna be a full-scale restaurant, and people do like to eat out, and that restaurant's gonna have a lot of cars, and they're gonna still want tenants to have parking spaces. And I'd just like to be on the record, 'cause I like the sound of my voice, and I'll be able to go back on this date and say, well, the end of wire was right again. That parking lot's got no parking.
Isn't there criteria?
Because we allowed a restaurant in the middle of a parking lot. There you go. Thank you.
I'm sorry, what?
Isn't there a, what's the word I'm looking for? A criteria? So many parking lots per?
Yes.
Was that waived?
They, they may have gotten a slight waiver on it for this one because of their own history, of their own experiences with other places like this. But the planning board does take it very seriously, Dan, and, and I think it will be all right. But we'll find out.
He's gonna wait to say, I told you so. That's what he's.
And we'd be happy to hear that. In fact, why don't you come to one of our meetings to say that?
Tom, Tom Cade does such a fabulous job.
Oh, you don't feel a need to?
As liaison, I would not wanna step on any toes.
Pete?
I'll withdraw my comments.
You're all set.
I do have one other thing.
Go right ahead. We're really getting off track tonight. And I'm just as bad, just as bad.
Once again, the town of Merrimack has a number of positions to open. Some of those positions include the police department, equipment owner, operators, and maintainers. Please visit www.merrimacknh.gov underneath Human Resources for a complete listing of all positions we are currently recruiting for. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Paul. There is no consent agenda, nor is there any old business. Under new business committee appointments, I do have to table Rachel Ricker and Richard Konescu. We have problems with interviewing, so we weren't able to complete those for tonight's meeting. But I will accept a motion to accept Michael Bouvier for the Conservation Commission full-time, and that is a reappointment for a full member.
So moved.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, second by Finley Rathhouse. I do have paperwork regarding the interview, if anyone wants to look at it, for committee.
You did interview? This is the one you required to?
It was one of those that.
It said, do you like doing the job? He said yes. I said, thank you very much.
That's cool. I'm just curious.
I'd like to say something.
Yes, Jackie.
Yes. I just, I do wanna point out that Mike Bouvier is one of the most dedicated committee people that I have encountered in Merrimack. He's, and the Conservation Commission is full of opportunities to get out in the woods, do some physical work, and he's right there. And I'm, I've always been impressed with his dedication.
Good.
Very good.
Thank you, Jackie. Okay, okay. All those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Saying none. Seven zero zero. The signature for date round. These have to be signed as well. Okay, now, come on up, Lieutenant Leveque. You're lucky evening.
Taking his place.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's okay.
I'm terrible with names. You should help me.
You knew that, though, but you were just reading instead of.
I was just reading.
Yeah, I think it's on.
Okay, Town Council will consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation of four thousand, six hundred and forty dollars and seventy-nine cents from an anonymous resident to the Merrimack Police Department to be used for the purchase of three Sig Sauer SIG four hundred Elite rifles pursuant to RSA thirty-one, colon, ninety-five, dash B, and Charter Article eight, dash fifteen. So go right ahead.
Thank you. Thanks for the counsel, Mr. McCallie, for your time this evening. And as indicated in the agenda request, this very generous anonymous donation is for the purchase of three brand-new rifles for our current inventory at the P D. As indicated in the agenda request submitted by Lieutenant Leveque, and Councilman Albert can attest to this, it's been quite some time where our detective units have not been equipped with rifles. And although our detective vehicles and our detectives are not out patrolling eight hours a day per shift, like our patrolmen, they are out on occasion and they do respond to critical incidents, and they need the appropriate equipment. We just got a recent donation for a ballistic vest. If you recall, I came before you with Captain Roy to accept the donation for, for those vests. So this would just be another piece of equipment that we could add to their vehicles, which is much needed, and would fully equip them and prepare them in case they need to respond to a critical incident and assist officers with, with dealing with it. So, three brand-new rifles, a much-needed upgrade over the ones that we currently have in the fleet, although the ones we have in the fleet right now are perfectly functioning and work. These are much more user-friendly. They will be equipped with red dot optics on top of, to, to go along with the existing iron sights that we have, and they allow us to much more easily attach accessories, vertical grips, lighting, those types of things that we need on these guns. So, other than that, that's, that's pretty much it. So, like I said, it's a very generous donation. The donator, as indicated, wants to remain anonymous, but the donor is a Merrimack resident and is a supporter of law enforcement, so.
Very nice.
If anyone has any questions.
Questions. Bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lieutenant, can you talk a little bit, I mean, Sig Sauer to me is, is a very reputable name. Can you talk a little bit about the, the product? Is it easy to maintain? Like, any maintenance concerns that we would have with the rifle? Does it come with a warranty guarantee, that kind of thing?
The warranty, I can't speak to. I don't, I, I know that most manufacturers have, have a warranty. I can't speak. The warranty, I can't speak to. I don't... I know that most manufacturers have a warranty. I can't speak to the warranty on these guns. I can tell you that the containment team, which I'm a member of, have... We all have Sig Sawyer rifles. We purchased them, I wanna say maybe about three years ago. So everyone on the team, there's 11 of us, have the rifles. We've been using them for about a three-year period of time. We've had no issues with them. Great reliability. I think we had a minor issue with one of the rifles. It was sent back for repairs, and within two days, we received it back. The great thing about SIG, and one of the reasons why we went to SIG when we went for the containment team rifles as opposed to Colt, which is located in Connecticut, was the fact that it was a local New Hampshire-based company, and their customer service with us has been awesome. It's been great. We've got no complaints. And like I said, the ones that we have currently with the team right now, no issues whatsoever functioning-wise or any of that. And the company's been very easy to deal with, so.
Just one minor follow-up. Just, it's a curiosity question. Are these single-shot rifles, or are they semi-automatic with the clip?
Semi-automatic.
Okay.
Semi-automatic rifles.
Okay.
An M4 platform. It's similar to what the military uses.
Okay, good. Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete?
Just in support of Lieutenant, prior to my retirement, we did an active shooter drill with the Department of Homeland Security. And one of the things we discovered in doing this drill, and that's why we do them, was that, God forbid, but in the event of an active shooter, one of our schools or one of our nearby placements, the folks, the staff at the PD itself, the building, would be coming out. And therefore, we identified that we could have detectives coming out, and they would be ill-equipped not having a rifle. And so this is... I support it, and I think it's very important to have, and I think that addresses a need, so.
Excellent. Thank you, Pete. Any other questions? Come on, Tom.
I don't mean to be a wet blanket, but I'm gonna be. It sounds like we're militarizing our police force. And we see that all over the place around the state, where Nashua or Manchester or something got a big bear assault vehicle and all these things. And I'm just wondering how many rifles we need in the town of Merrimack, you know, when I would imagine most of the issues that you guys deal with on a day-to-day basis are a lot more personal, where your tasers and pistols are sufficient to deal with your situations. You said you've got 11 rifles already in your containment team, and you wanna add three more to Merrimack? Is that the total? Are we talking 14 rifles in Merrimack, or how?
There's actually more, to be quite honest with you. The rifles that we have for the containment team, the reason why we purchased those individually is we wanted to make sure that the rifles that we had for the team were sighted in and equipped for each team member, because we felt that that was important, that that be the case. Leading up to us purchasing the containment team rifles, years ago, the department went through the purchase of getting rifles for each patrol car, and we have 10 patrol cars. So the rifles that we have in those patrol cars were the result of incidents such as Columbine, the LA shootout, a lot of active shooter-related incidents where police were met with force that they could not combat with a pistol or with a taser, or even with a shotgun. That's where the whole push for rifles came from, and that's why we currently deploy them and have them. It's, you know, having that option under a worst-case scenario would allow us to deal with a critical incident when you're dealing with an active shooter. Because a lot of these active shooters have military-style weapons. They have the AK-47s. They have these type of M4 semi-automatic rifles. And to be quite honest, I'm a shooter. I enjoy shooting. But I can tell you, as a policeman, I wouldn't wanna engage an individual with an AK-47 with my pistol. It would put me in an extreme disadvantage, not only putting myself at risk and in jeopardy, but anyone else around me that I'm trying to protect. So that's the sole purpose of the rifles. And again, these rifles here would be going in detectives' units that don't currently have rifles in. The detective units, just so you know, are the unmarked police cars that we have, typically the cars you see parked out front. They would be going in those cars, and they'd be secured in locks. And again, those rifles would only be deployed under those types of circumstances. So that's the reason why we have them, is for those extreme circumstances and those extreme circumstances only.
I understand that, and I find myself conflicted, because I don't wanna say we shouldn't be prepared. On the other hand, I'm curious as to how much preparation we need in a town like Merrimack, in a state like New Hampshire. Granted, you never know when a Columbine or something like that's gonna happen anywhere. But it just... It continues to frustrate me that we feel like we need more and more equipment everywhere we go. And, you know, for the detectives who normally are not out on the street in a conflict situation, to need to carry rifles around with them all the time just seems like overkill. And I guess I'm just confused by that, and I'm not convinced that we need more than the 20 or more rifles that it sounds like we have in the town already.
Pete, you wanted to address?
Tom, and I actually wrote a thesis paper in college on this issue, brought up by the ACLU regarding the police militarization of police. And I guess I'll start it with, the reason we first went to rifles. I went to a standoff call one night, myself and three officers, and a gentleman barricaded himself in a house with about 12 rifles. And we had shotguns in our cars, and we had our pistols, and he had better firearms firepower than we did. And luckily, we were able to have Bedford show up, and they had assault rifles. There was no rounds fired that night, thank God.
That was part of my point.
But, you know, it was... We were at a distinct disadvantage when this gentleman was hanging his rifle out the window, and we saw the type of firepower he had, and we didn't have that same amount. And I would submit to you that the detectives, granted, they're in the building, and they're not on the road, but many times and many evenings, when you've got two cars that are tied up maybe at a domestic, or you've got two... At an accident, and you've got one guy going to a domestic, the detectives are the guys that are backing us up. And it's also, you know, I brought up the active shooter and stuff. That's one issue that we're looking to address. But these guys come out and back us up, too, on whatever call happens to be going on. So just, I just feel like I needed to get that out there.
And I appreciate that. I just still am not convinced that we need all these many rifles out there, because there's not that many situations where you run into them. That was one that you did. And I certainly wouldn't have engaged them without some kind of backup and a little more firepower. But you contained the system until you did get more backup power. And so for everybody running around town to have a rifle just seems a little extreme to me, but...
Well, and, you know, and I don't wanna get into a long debate, because I... Might as well. But I don't... I... Characterizing it as everybody running around without a rifle, these weapons are secured in vehicles. They're not just rolling around in a trunk. And to me, I think it's, you know, and I know the training that goes into this and the use and the safety precautions taken. So, you know, these guys qualify with these weapons every year, and they train with them whenever they can on other days. So, you know, I know, and I feel very confident in them having the rifles and them being deployed. They're locked in every car, and they're locked in racks, so.
Yes, Dan?
To add my two cents, and to address Tom, the word that I keep coming up as you guys were speaking was just insurance. I view it as an insurance against the worst-case scenario. Whether we like it or not, I don't pass judgment on it. I just accept it for what it is. We have a good, freedom, libertarian country. Guns are prevalent. Over the last decade, gun sales have just grown crazy. Everybody loves guns. Everybody's got guns. And so if we're gonna task our police force with protecting our community, you gotta keep up with the rest of our countries and their fascination with guns. So if the detectives are better prepared as an insurance policy, then that's how I view it. I view it strictly as that insurance, that they're ready when they need it. Maybe they'll never be used other than the firing range and practice, but that's why I support it, for that reason of insurance.
To be quite honest, and that's typically the case. I mean, most of the time that these are removed from cars, it's for firearms training. Really is.
And that's the way you want it.
Exactly. It's exactly the way you want it. And, you know, although I understand your concern with adding to the existing inventory, what we're adding here is really something that we already have. This isn't anything different than we have in the other cars. It's just, we're just basically, we're providing the detectives with the ability to protect themselves and be of assistance if something like this happens. Because like Councilman Albert was saying, there are numerous times, I can tell you as a ship supervisor, because that's what I do right now. We've had numerous days and shifts where we're running, you know, short-staffed. It's just the way it is, and it's busy, and it's off the wall. And I've had two to three detectives helping me with calls, handling calls, backing me up on calls. So they're out there, helping us with this kind of stuff. I know that they would appreciate the equipment, so.
Jackie?
I bemoan the fact that we seem to need these, but I think we do. You never know. People in these small towns who have had terrible things happen in their schools and so forth, they didn't ever expect anything to happen. And I think that we've kind of opened the town to the larger world over the last few years with the opening of the mall. It sounds simple as job, but when I'm over there, I don't feel like I'm even in Merrimack. And I think I see people from all states in the parking lot when you walk into the mall. And I feel that I would be so heartsick, of course. You know, it's probably trite to say, if anything happened to one of our police because of a shooter, I would anyway, no matter what you had equipment. But I'm horrified at the news over the last week, as we all are. And you never know when something like that might happen in our town. You don't... I feel unfortunately that we should have these, this equipment.
Finley?
Oh, I definitely understand where Tom's coming from, because I've had those concerns over the years. But the way I envision it right now for Merrimack is that if, in fact, you know, things were to turn in our government, we're not gonna be allowing certain things to go down. And that's, you know, it's the deeper, longer thought, I think, that provoked my concern over the years of the militarization of the police department. So I'm not concerned about it, because I know the councils that I've worked with for a while wouldn't allow those things to happen in our town. And I'm confident of that, so.
What things?
Well, I mean, what's the concern of...
I would not approve a tank.
No, no.
So that was my next question, is where do we stop?
Exactly.
I mean, we're okay bringing these in. What, you know, when do we stop? Do we stop because these are semi-automatic, and we don't allow you to go to automatic? Or do you stop with no hand grenades? Or do you... I mean, I just don't know where we go.
Well, I'll tell you, if there was a justification for hand grenades, then show me the justification. I know, but that's my point. If you want an armored... If you want an armored vehicle, show me the justification for an armored vehicle, which is what, you know, might it be? Someday, might it be justified? Maybe someday it will be. Hopefully, I won't be around for that. But this is... I wouldn't wanna be around for that. If there was ever a time to justify the need for that, I wouldn't wanna be around. But anyway, so which backs you up, Finley, is what I'm saying, is that I also have that concern. But I think that you have to look at and make your decision based upon the rationale that's presented, the reasonableness of it in comparison to the need, so. Yep, Pete?
Again, you know, and I go back to my experiences at the PD, and I think that there's a general understanding over there, and they know. And the lieutenant represents it well, is I don't see the PD coming to us for armored cars or anything like that. And Tom, you raised a great question, and in 32 years, I watched law enforcement evolve and change. And when we started after Columbine, doing active shooter, dynamic entry-in, I remember I scratched my head and said, "Wow, we have to train for this now."
Yep.
And history proved out that since Columbine, there's been a number now, Matt probably, I used to do the trainings for it. What's the number now since Columbine and shootings? It's gone to... It's just continued, though.
It has continued, and I certainly wouldn't argue with that, but I...
Thank you.
I'm frustrated that since 9/11, we've given up all of our freedoms, and we're now more in jail than not in jail as far as our ability to do things. And the more we continue to do this, it's the crab boil effect.
Yeah.
Eventually, I've given up every freedom you have.
And I think that's what's so important, is to have those conversations. It's when you're not allowed to have those conversations that we're really in deep trouble. Having the conversations of the pros and cons and everything else, and being able to respect those diversity of opinions. That's the bottom line. So I do appreciate your sentiments. Okay, are we ready for a vote? Or do we even have a motion?
We do. We did.
I don't think we did.
You don't think we did?
Dan?
We do not have a motion. See? I was ahead of this.
Make a motion for the town council to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation of $4,640.
To approve, to approve or accept, okay.
For the town... Let me start from the beginning.
Yep.
To the town council to accept the expenditure of a donation of $4,640.79 from an anonymous resident to the Merrimack Police Department to be used for the purchase of three SIG Sawyer SIG 400 Elite rifles pursuant to RSA 31:95-B and Charter Article 8-15.
Motion made by Dan Dwyer, second by Pete Albert. Any further discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Six, one, zero. Tom Cade in opposition. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Have a good weekend. Good to see you.
Are you ready, Don? She's saying no. Are you ready? No, I'm not. Investment policy. I went at potential... I crossed off the wrong one. Potential road infrastructure... I'm trying to help you. See, I moved ahead. Potential road infrastructure project discussion submitted by Deputy Public Works Director and Town Engineer Don. Okay, I'm gonna do a tuamala.
Very good.
The town council... A couple of weeks ago, I put... Yeah, I think two... The town council, they'll be presented with details of potential road infrastructure. Okay, and just to remind the group, remember, we have this extra money. And part of what we're going to be discussing, and Pete, I'm going to... Rest assured that you'll bring up your discussions as well. But, okay, let us know what your ideas are. What's the need-tos versus the want-tos, I suppose?
It's a definite need. A few weeks ago, the highway department was called out for a tree that had been across the road.
Daniel Webster.
Daniel Webster Drive. As they were cutting up this tree, they looked on Daniel Webster Highway and discovered a sinkhole on the sideline. So they fixed it, but we needed to investigate further, which we did, because there's a culvert underneath that.
Underneath the sinkhole.
Yes.
All right. For everybody at home, Daniel Webster Drive is that single road that goes down towards Horseshoe Pond.
Across from King Cone.
Daniel Webster Highway is that old US 3 that goes through.
Which is the main road.
Which is the main road. So now everybody has their bearings.
Great, thank you, Paul.
So the culvert goes from King Cone across the street, just before Island...
Just speak a little louder.
Okay. Just before Island Drive. So we went crawling through this culvert. It's a very large, it's four-by-five foot, or four-by-four, four-and-a-half-by-four, four-and-a-half-foot culvert. It was constructed back in the early 1930s when DW Highway was straightened out in that area. So what we discovered was that the concrete has been spalling off, or falling off, basically. And the rods, the retaining, the rebar that's on the inside, holding the box together, is also starting to deteriorate. This has allowed water to flow through in and out of the culvert in various locations. It takes the fine materials along with it, so it has created some voids in the material. Now, we, just like Amherst Road, we have about 20 feet of cover over this pipe, or minus the pipe, so it's about 16 feet. So the voids, there are a couple that we know, one of which is very large. You could probably fit... know, one of which is very large, you could probably fit, like, three people within it. But, um, the road was constructed with a four-inch reinforced concrete base. The whole road was concrete up above. So, this is currently acting as a bridge, but it's not designed to carry this. We've investigated, we've put cameras down through, we've looked at as many holes, you know, there are several holes within it, and we've looked at everything we could. We can't see through all of it. We went through an analysis to see if we could repair all of this, and we could do that, but we'd be throwing a couple hundred thousand dollars away, and still need to be able, have to replace it in the future. So, in the last couple of weeks, we have, um, gotten two different, uh, prices on replacing this structure. And we're looking at, basically, we had, they're within ten percent of each other. One came in at five hundred and ten thousand, the other one came in at five hundred and forty-three thousand. We had them both put in large contingency amounts, but, so we feel that the amount, the real amount that will be spent will be somewhere between four hundred and fifty thousand to five hundred thousand. Because we, we have been doing a lot of investigation to understand, you know, the construction of the road and what, where we're at. So, um, that's what we're looking at, to be able to spend for this culvert.
Paul?
We've actually took two companies, broke them apart, put them in separate rooms, gave them the same information, and that's how they came out. They're within ten percent of one another, because we knew that this was going to be an expensive fix to accomplish. Uh, one thing is, is the road will be open.
Right, because you have a diversion.
Because we have three lanes of traffic. So, we'll do one, then the other lane, and then the third lane.
We, we changed that today.
Okay.
Because both of the companies, we met, both of, with the both of them out in the field this morning, and they both came up with an alternative to that, which they both feel would work. And again, they were totally separate, and they came up with the same conclusion, because our way was to do one lane at a time. That makes it very difficult when they're in the middle to be able to construct with traffic on both sides. So, what we've come up with is to do the first forty feet at the outlet side, which are, is the Island Drive side, do the first forty feet, close off DW Drive, have them do the work there, then put both lanes down there. So, we'll make it wide enough at that point-
For both lanes to go.
For both lanes. They'll, they'll have to be slow traffic, you know, but we can fit both lanes in, and we did, we have plans to, to be able to do that. And then move the construction up and shut a small section of DW Highway off. You know, obviously, we have to be able to allow people to get into King Cone, and we have to allow people to get into their residence, which is down south from there. But then, they can be able to work on DW Highway and complete the project. Um, and what we're looking at is to be able to replace this is an eighty-four inch pipe. It's big. Um, because we have to be able to, just as in Amherst Road, I went from a thirty-six inch to a sixty inch.
How much was Amherst Road? How much did that cost us?
Two hundred, just, with, with everything that has come in, it's just a little bit over two hundred, with the survey work and the other work we had done.
Bigger pipe.
So, it's literally just bigger?
It's twice the size.
It's got to go through DW Drive, DW Drive as well as DW Highway.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
How far does it go? What's the length of it?
Uh, we're looking at about ninety feet.
Versus, what, what did we do for Amherst?
We ended up with a hundred and twenty feet.
So.
Because the road comes up, and it was, DW Highway is steeper than what Amherst Road actually was. So, we've got more road to deal with in that side. Plus, we have to be able to take up this concrete, which is reinforced.
Right, because the highway is concrete.
The highway, so the driving lanes on DW Highway have concrete.
Underneath them.
Underneath them, underneath the pavement.
Which is on top of-
It's well onto-
The culvert.
Yes.
Yeah, ten feet over the culvert.
Okay. So, you're saying you're going to remove that?
Right.
There's no-
There's no easy way to do that. So, that's a lot of the extra cost. Plus, we're on a busier road, it's going to take more to be able to do this. I mean, to have two companies come up with the same number.
Pretty close.
You know, within ten percent, it was less than ten percent, so.
Okay, Pete, you've got ideas. You want to present them now?
Well, I have this, uh, Christmas list of road projects I'm hoping for.
I know.
I'm not even going to comment.
Well, I think what ended up happening, when we, when we first heard about this, there were figures like two fifty, two seventy-five. So, I'm thinking the same thing, well, there's not even an option. Yeah. Jackie, and then Finley?
Okay. I was wondering what proportion, what portion of the cost and labor is, is DW Drive?
I have-
You don't know?
I have no way of splitting it out. They gave us a total cost for the whole road.
For the whole road, yeah.
They didn't break it, they broke it into different components within it.
Oh, my-
The, the problem, I don't know the cost, but the problem that, with the original sinkhole they found when cutting the tree, was because of the way the box, maybe you can explain it better than I can, but there's two different box culverts. There's one that sits underneath DW Highway.
Yeah.
And then there's one that sits underneath DW Drive, and there's failure between the connection.
Between the connection.
And that's because of the sinkhole on the white line.
So, it's the whole kit and caboodle.
And all this-
So, it's the whole thing, it's not-
I'm sorry. It, so all this is sixteen feet down? Is that what it's just?
The, the outlet side has nine feet of overburden, and the inlet side has sixteen.
And where does it come out, by the way?
Just north, or south of, um, Island Drive.
It goes into Horseshoe Pond, doesn't it?
Does it go into that marsh?
No, it does not. It goes, um, to the south of that.
So, that gentleman's house?
Yes.
That comes out right there?
South of his house, or?
South of his house, yes.
So, you're not really at Island Drive, you're-
No, we're just south of Island Drive, by one house.
So, Island-
Family in the name of God.
Oh, yeah, okay. Because, um, I guess this is a very non-engineering opinion. If, if it were possible to, um, just fix, fix DW Drive into a driveway for the, the two people who live there, and just continue it as a road. I wondered if that might save any grief.
Thinking of Antwerp Drive?
I'm thinking of, um, no, I'm thinking of DW.
There's not two people that live, I mean, there are two people that live on DW Drive, but that then goes to Island Drive.
Yeah, yes, but there's a-
And there's forty people out there or something.
Oh, I don't mean to discontinue Island Drive or that little segment I'm talking about.
You've got to force people to go past, and then do a one-eighty to come down the other side of DW Drive again, to do, give it a-
It's not, it's just a, um, a regular, a right-hand turn, I mean, it's already-
Set it going.
Completely okay road into- Right across from, just about across from King Cone, there's a little area where-
Forty, there's a ninety-degree entrance.
Yeah, that's all, it's just a regular-
Turn right, and then turn right, and then turn left. I mean, it's not, it, it doesn't go straight into Island Drive.
Right.
Yes, it does. It doesn't, it, it goes right straight. It's your little drawl?
It goes straight into the apartment complex.
Yeah.
But it goes to the right in order to get to Island Drive, to get out onto that peninsula in Horseshoe Pond. Yeah, actually, it goes to the right, about a-
Do we need to go for a council term?
I'm not talking about that steep turn, like, from Shaw's.
I'm, I can show you on the map, if you like. Google Earth.
Okay.
In the meantime.
Finley, go ahead, and then, Dan, you had a question.
All right, I just have a couple of questions. One is, um, actually becoming a little bit more of a bigger concern to me. Um, but the first question is, if we didn't have this, what was it, four ninety-nine, or?
Yeah, four ninety-nine thousand dollars.
Yeah. If we didn't have that, how would we have funded this? Paul?
We would have came and wiped out our capital reserve fund for road infrastructure.
Okay.
And we would have had to beg them, we would have taken some of the money out of the DW Highway Capital Reserve Fund that we put aside for paving. So, we'd had to use both, both capital reserve funds to fund this project, if we didn't have this money.
And it would have goofed up a lot of-
Projects down the road.
Projects that's already gone on. But, I guess, what my concern, what is really becoming a bigger concern is, this is the second failure we've had. I don't know what kind of inspection process. I know we've been looking, and there was a conversation about not having a quality enough camera to do real thorough inspections.
Oh, no, that's not-
But that's something that I think we really have to start concentrating on, because this, you know, this popping up all of a sudden can become extremely-
Because this is the second one.
Yeah.
I, I had that same conversation with Director Fox about this, saying, okay, within a month, two of them failed. What, what are we going to do? How are we going to do inspection cycle? They, um, they have, CDM came out, and they pointed out all these culverts to us.
Who did?
Uh, CDM. It was a consultant we had a couple of years ago, come out when we were doing some of the stormwater, to figure out where, where the outlets were. They pointed out a lot of these culverts for us. Um, Waste Water bought a sewer camera this year, actually, we just bought it. It was in the budget to be able to do their pipes and make sure the condition of our pipes. Um, we are going to be using that camera to start surveying all these culverts that we have, and start looking into getting those surveyed, so that we can now look at them and, and actually put a plan in place, because there, there are a lot of them in town.
It's reminded me, quite honestly, of the sewer manholes. They, they, for forty-plus years, deterioration's going on, and nobody even contemplated, you know, the impact it could have. So, I, I, we do have to do that. So, wherever, I don't know if that has to be something we have to talk about, or?
We are starting a plan.
Okay.
We, that Director Fox is putting a plan in place to start, excuse me, reviewing all these culverts and getting a camera in there to check them out, to make, see what kind of condition they're in.
Okay. Dan, did you-
Thank you.
I say, I say this because I'm not an engineer, but my common sense eyes, when I look behind, and I have many times, the water flow is coming from behind King Cone. It's, I don't see the volume of water that is being moved underneath the road there. What am I, what am I missing? Is, is this is not a major brook? It's-
Yes, it is.
All right.
Because it starts at Natick Lake, it goes to Greens Pond, it comes down to Amherst Road, which we just increased the size of that pipe, because we're required to have a hundred-year storm pass through that pipe.
All right, can, can, sorry, can I interrupt you as you're going along? Greens Pond, for instance, why are we letting water leave there anyway, then?
What are you going to do with it?
Damn it. I mean, wherever, wherever that, wherever that water's, the, last year was down to a mud pit, it was an ankle deep. So, I, you know, it seems to me you would restructure this water, that seems to be a nuisance. Uh, Greens Pond, why can't the water stay where it is? Why are we letting it go all, because if I went out there right now tonight and looked behind, um, King Cone, I would, I would see nothing. But it's August, you know, at that time of the year, right now.
I bet there's some regulations related to it, too.
I bet, I bet I could sit and, and pick out ferns in the back of King Cone right now, right? Is there running water at the moment?
Yes.
All right.
A small amount.
A small amount.
Well, from the Amherst Road, which I've just opened up.
Mm-hmm.
It then goes underneath Executive Park Drive.
Right.
Underneath Effie Everett, and then down to King Cone.
So, that's the flow of it?
That's the flow.
It just, and, and then it goes behind this guy's house, which is just a marsh.
But are there regulations related to the clean water act kind of thing?
The water company, or the water MVD is in charge of Greens Pond. They can let water in and out. And I have, when Amherst Road was failing.
Yep.
We stopped, we didn't stop it, but we slowed it down.
Trickle and balance, right, right.
To minimize the impact.
It just seems like we're spending a half a million dollars to move so, such little water, uh, like it's a nuisance. Is there a better, is there a better way to, to do this?
It's not going to, whether we go down in size to a seventy-two inch, it, the cost is-
It's flowing no matter what.
Yeah, yes. And in the spring, it flows more.
You can't stop Natick Brook. It, it's draining an entire region of the town to the, to the river, effectively. Because it goes behind the guy's house into Horseshoe Pond, and then goes through the dam.
In Natick Brook, when we put too many, too many boards in to raise that level, it impacts the houses along Natick Lake. And their basements can get water. Um, so we try, there's a delicate balance in all of this, as to where the water levels can be, so that it doesn't impact the residents of the town.
Sounds like you just want to be able to take a, a super strong pipe and put it in the middle, you know, and just reinforce around it. But, that's not doable. I understand what you're saying. First, just this-
It's just the price blows me away.
I know.
You know, it's a half a million dollars.
Oh, it's, look at the sidewalk. I mean, I just couldn't imagine that the cost really was justifiable, but it, it's a huge project, just right there. That's a little sidewalk.
And as, as my grandmother would say, well, be thankful you've got the money. You know, you'd say, I have to pay this. Well, just be thankful that you have the money.
So, the second part of this would be, if we do have anything left over from this, and we will be monitoring and trying to cut whatever costs we can. Um, and if we do have some money left over, we would like to put that towards any paving projects, and that would be on next year. Um, it's collector roads, the feeder roads, um, that need to be done, that haven't been done recently.
And that's probably where you are interested, right, Pete?
Don, just, I know the Amherst Road, there was some right-of-way issues. Are there any right-of-way issues with this project? I'm not sure, maybe there always is, I don't know.
I believe there, there will be. We're not at that point yet. We're, we're still working on that. But yes, I have been getting the butters' names and addresses, and, uh, we'll be sending them some letters.
Okay, so that could-
Yes.
That could increase the cost, then?
It could.
Okay, thank you.
We're trying to stay within the right-of-way, but I-
I understand.
I can't guarantee at this point.
Okay, so, you need from us, with tears on our eyes?
I think what we need from the council was the consensus that, yes, this is a good use of the money, and that, uh, that, uh, we understand where this, we understand that, you got, Town of Don and Kyle, we'll be looking at this project and trying to get it as inexpensive as possible, but to do a very good job. So, it lasts from nineteen thirty-nine to two thousand seventeen, almost eighty years, so that we get another eighty years out of this pipe.
Of course, we could be, we're not going to be alive, so who cares about that?
You might be.
No, I won't. Anyway, okay. So, we need a consensus. What's the consensus? Yes.
Just, yes.
Yeah, I don't, we don't have a choice, Tony.
So, I guess I wasn't paying enough attention, Finley, when you asked what would happen if we didn't have this money fall in our laps. How, how critical is it that we act on this immediately?
Very.
And why do you say that? Because you've already indicated that the road is acting like a bridge, and-
It's not going to act like a bridge forever.
Well, no, it's done so for quite a few years, though.
The sinkhole is the red flag.
Sinkhole isn't even on the street, though, right?
It was on the white line.
In the center of the street, on the side.
On the side, on the side.
On the shoulder.
But we know there are bigger ones in the middle. And the road wasn't designed to be a bridge, which is what it's doing now.
Right.
And with last year's drought, and this year's spring, and all of rain, and the waters that have come through, and the water table has come back up, uh, there is still water flowing in the middle of the culvert. It's coming from the outside, coming in. It's not comforting, so. Um, yes, our engineers, um, that we use for all the bridge design, I've had them down, and they looked at it, and they feel it's very important to-
That it's critical?
Yes. It's reached its age. It's over eighty years old. Somewhere between nineteen thirty-one to nineteen thirty-six was when it was actually installed. So, they feel it's very critical before winter.
It is a long time ago.
The most critical spot in Merrimack? Chamberlain Bridge, or any other places in town, or trivial in comparison?
I thought Amherst Road was big, but this is, um, by far, much bigger.
Size-wise.
Size-wise. Paul?
If we did not get this money from the state, we would have been coming forward with, uh, asking the council to withdraw from the Capital Reserve Fund to do this project. That's how important it is. It would have been an emergency to, to come to the council and try to get this project done. It's, it's the number of cars that go over in a day, but it's also the- It's, it's the number of cars that go over in a day, but it's also the type of vehicles that go over in a day. There's a lot of tractor-trailer trucks that go over that.
Which was not designed in 1930.
Absolutely.
That traffic, right? Was not designed to be able to. Jackie?
Yeah, I, I wanted to say that Frank Flanders and a few other of the men that I remember from the old, old days saw that, that highway get paved, and they are long dead. I have to say that. But, and the other thing is, it sounds like a small project, small insignificant project. It's a culvert. Well, it's the main road, you know, and that could cause, and I don't think we wanna have anything happen unexpectedly in the middle of the winter. It's like people's septic system, you know, when does it fail, then winter.
And then the cost double.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
So, if I may, you're talking about diverting traffic onto DW Drive. Certainly in the area where you do the reconstruction, you could beef up DW Drive to handle truck traffic. Are you gonna do that for the entire section of DW Drive? Where it goes in front of Pondview Drive and on back to DW Highway? Are you gonna build up the whole thing so that it can handle truck traffic or...
Yes.
So you are reconstructing that entire road?
A lot of the road is already wide enough to be able to handle two lanes.
Two lanes of heavy truck traffic?
Yes. There are a couple of trees, some limbs that need to come down to be able to have them pass. The section from Island Drive back up to DW Highway, they were working out how to widen that section up, because that's the only section that really needs to be widened, and it will only be temporary. It's not gonna be left that way. We'll go back down to a one-way.
But we know there's problems there because Mr., I forget his name, that lives on the corner there, owns half of Pond Island Drive, or half of DW Drive, and his bushes have always been a contentious problem and stuff like that.
Yes, that, the bushes will have to be cut back in that section, back to the telephone pole. And then we're going to cut the bank and back...
You realize what you're walking into?
Good luck with that.
Pete?
Don, with, obviously, if you get approval for this, when would work begin on this?
After Labor Day.
After Labor Day?
Somewhere around, probably the middle of September.
Okay, right, thank you.
Yes, the contractors have been reworking their schedule to fit this back in.
Yeah, I guess, and I think we're all trying to, knowing that, that's a, that is a crazy section of roadway with the dip down in DW Drive, and I think we're all, maybe a diagram at some point to see how this is gonna work would be helpful at some point, just to, you know, even in a town council meeting and to have it out to the public to see how the traffic's gonna flow.
Yep.
Yes, we had...
Thank you.
It's the very nature of emergency things that you, you can't be prepared for and planned for, but, you know, to have this come before a meeting when we happen to get $500,000 in unanticipated funds and then say that this is an emergency that we can't overlook, we did receive some notice from you a couple of weeks ago that this had happened, but this is the first time it's been publicly stated that there's an issue or a problem. I'm sure there are a lot of people out there that are gonna watch this program, that are gonna flip out on us because we're suddenly saying we have an emergency, we have to, we have to patch in town with any and all anticipated funds and things of that nature. It's just, this is not a good situation.
Well, hopefully, it won't be conspiracy, conspiracy theories. It'll be a coincidental...
Well, I'm not going on the forum, so I'll tell you that.
Well, yeah, but it's a coincidental, it is a coincidental.
There are no coincidences.
I mean, if that tree had not fallen on Daniel Webster, we would know nothing about it.
That's correct.
Why? The tree didn't cause the sinkhole?
No, but that, but that's when they noticed it.
Well, yeah, but you go, you guys are maintaining those roads, you would've noticed at some point in any case.
When it got deeper, probably.
Okay.
In the middle. Pete?
And I, in thinking about, like Dan and Tom have said and how this comes about, I gotta imagine this erosion started a long time ago, and that's one of the main drains. I remember the Mother's Day flood when Horseshoe Pond filled up. That was one of the main areas where the water drained through, and I gotta imagine this is where it began. And then we had all the heavy rains in the spring and just over the time, all the big storms and floods we've had, so.
Jackie?
Yes, and I also wanna say that, that the DPW has been very busy working on the engineering for this ever since it happened and ever since they noticed. And they have found they did like a colonoscopy on it, and they had to, you know, get all the data in it. And I honestly think that they've been acting in a deliberate and hasty, you know, as hasty as possible way.
Right, and the big concern in my estimation is, in fact, that we don't know that these things are happening, which is why I'm looking forward to Kyle bringing something to us because we do have to know this. And I don't know how, the frequency of a deep inspection would be, but we do have to have some idea and they can let us know.
Yeah, be proactive in examination rather than waiting for the symptoms to arrive before we start looking at it, yeah.
And that's what we wanna do, is to be able to set up a program, usually, using Waste Water's camera. But of course, Waste Water will have first option on doing their pipes first, so, yes, we will, that, that's our goal, but it seems like lately else we've been doing is running around for emergency and emergency.
Finley?
Don, we, we knew that Amherst Road was gonna be taken care of, it just was, it became sooner than we had expected.
Correct.
Was this at any point configured in the lineup or...
I don't know. I didn't go and pull that list out. I haven't had two minutes to do that.
Fair enough. It was just, no. So, so that's, I'm sure we're gonna have this conversation sooner.
It was not, it was not in the CIP, you know, it wasn't in that list, but we do have a list of culverts that we have been watching. I didn't pull that list.
Okay.
But I, I don't know, nobody seemed to have a...
It'll be good to have an agenda item on this so we can have this discussion because back in the nineties, I remember questioning Chamberlain Bridge, and I was told at the time by Chip Chesley that it, that type of bridge is rock solid and it's a great bridge. So they, they'd done some pointing on it, you know, back in those days, and so all these things really need a good look in that.
Yeah, let's see if we can set up a projected timeline on that. Even if it's December, that we should be able to examine, or at least, write that down. What do they call that, a tickle thing?
Tickle file.
Tickle file.
That was the old one.
Beginning of December to evaluate what's the status. How's that? Even if it's not done, what's the status? Is that reasonable?
I think so. It might be conversation for budget time for Capital Reserve Funds or whatever else.
Well, if they have it early, even better. But hopefully, by then, they've had time to do some visualization with a camera.
Yeah.
It's going to take time to be able to run the camera through, because it's not gonna be done overnight.
Yeah, I understand. But, you know, even if you went in December and said, okay, this is a plan.
Setting up a plan.
It just helps us to know that, that we're trying to keep on top of it, too. Does that sound reasonable, Finley?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so, we have a consensus, yes? Okay, so be it. Thank you very much, Don. Is there any other questions or anything?
What do we have? I'm sorry, what did you say we have?
We had a consensus that, yes, go ahead and proceed with the examination, right?
I would, the one, motion.
That we are agreeing to, unless you want a motion. Do you want a motion?
I would think we ought to do something a little more formal or official about what we plan to do.
Because Paul was saying we need a consensus, that's all. But if we need a motion, that's fine.
You don't have the exact amount yet, so you can give us an up to amount?
I don't even care if you have an amount, I'm just saying that we should, we should approve this as an emergency project that we move forward on or something like that. Just, just so that at least there's some verbiage somewhere that we voted on and we all agreed that, in fact, it needed to go.
Then, let's do that, then.
So, I move that we direct the town manager to have DPW look into and finalize plans to move forward with repair of the culvert and associated piping under DW Highway in the vicinity of Island Drive and King Cone pursuant to an emergency requirement to replace what's currently there, understanding the cost is in the area of half a million dollars. And they will come back to us with more definitive information as they develop it.
Seconded.
Motion made by Tom Kene, second by Bill Boyd. Any further discussion, questions? None, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, seven zero zero.
That's a point of order.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to, in the last couple of discussions, I've gotten the feeling that maybe some people are thinking I'm anti some of the departments in this town. And I'm very happy and appreciative of our police department, and I'm very happy and appreciative of our public works department. And I think they do a fantastic job, and I fully support the work that you guys are doing. There are times when situations come up that I'm not thoroughly in complete agreement with how they're presented or what's being presented or whatever, and that's part of my job as a town councillor to discuss those and bring them up. And, but I do want you, Don especially, to know that I'm definitely in support of the work that you guys are doing and appreciate the fantastic job you do here in Merrimack.
Thank you. And, you know, our job is to keep the public safe, and that's what we wanna do. And we're looking out for their interests when we're doing this. And, you know, right now, we feel that they're still safe and going over, it's, it's not a problem, but we do feel that we need to address it so that it's taken care of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to address you, Tom, to, just to be able to give some feedback to you, I think that's your responsibility, to be able to bring up that diverse opinion and the question. So, you know, hopefully, you get that sense of support as well, that...
And I'm not, I'm not feeling a lack of support from the council. I just want the public to know that I'm not, just trying to be a horse's ass, I'm actually trying to get as much information out as possible.
We tell you that if we thought so. We tell some of that all the time.
Because sometimes, Madam Chair, problems come before us that are already understood, and so we don't talk about them thoroughly, and I think it's important that we try and flush out as much as possible for people to understand. Thank you.
I agree. Okay, investment policy. This is really a housekeeping item. And why don't you say a few words, Paul, and...
The, the town council and before that, the Board of Selectment, on a yearly basis, approved the investment policy. That basically gives the town treasurer guidelines on how to invest the money, with the town's money. And we have RSA's that govern how we invest the town's money as well. What we do in, in the investment policy is we look at collateralization whenever possible. So, all the money, I can tell you right now, all the money that the town has invested in banks, whatever bank we're in, we have a hundred percent collateralization. And what that means is if that bank fails, we have a collateralization agreement with another bank so that the town does not lose any money one way or the other if a bank is failing. This, this RSA came up really when the banks were starting to fail back in the eighties. And right now, I'm preparing for the audit, that's next week in town, and as I was going through the audit notes and things of that sort, I've realized that the town council needs to review and approve the investment policy. That's been in place for my thirteen years, but well before that, when my predecessor. So what I'm asking the council to do is to approve, accept this policy for the investment policy and, and basically, accept the policy for the sixteen, seventeen fiscal year and the seventeen, eighteen fiscal year.
So is this supposed to be done annually, right?
It's supposed to be done annually, yes.
So, can we establish a tickle file?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, especially when the, because...
Love that word, tickle file.
The, when we did, the way we've, with the last vote, we have moved to an appointed treasurer.
Oh.
This will be the appointed treasurer's responsibility to make sure it's approved.
Ah, okay, so that's gonna automatically...
Right.
Okay, you, look at the verdict, you're finger up. Yes, Finley?
I've moved the acceptance of the investment policy for fiscal year 2016, seventeen, and 2017, eighteen.
Motion made by Finley Rothaus, second by Bill Boyd. Any questions, clarification needed, Tom?
Well, this investment policy here, looking like a very unofficial document, is the same one we've been using for the thirteen years or more that you've been involved?
Yes, this is...
There's no changes in there?
No changes.
It doesn't look like it's part of our town code or any of that kind of stuff. It's just a piece of paper with, says Town of Merrimack.
Right, it's, it's not, it's a full document that if we did need to make changes, we can come back in front of the council and get those changes made at a meeting.
Well, it's in the annual report, correct?
Not the investment policy.
This isn't in our annual report?
Not our investment policy. Our investments are, but not our investment policy.
I know that, I just...
Okay.
I just, I, I could've sworn it started in there.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Jackie, you have a question or... No, I'm just saying, do you have a question? No, okay. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, seven zero zero. Okay, approval of minutes from the town council meeting July twentieth. That you were not here for, Mr. Keneck. You were on your vacation.
Madam Chair, I move the town council meeting minutes of Thursday, July twentieth, 2017, as presented.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, second by Peter Albert. Any corrections?
Why?
I'm sorry.
I wasn't here.
On page three, line twenty...
You're not allowed to make corrections.
I'm gonna make a suggestion, you guys can tell me if the words are right. Line twenty-two, towards the end, it says, "The truncated meeting schedule, comma, and would up, comma, on numerous occasions." And I think it was supposed to be wound up.
I would agree with that.
Past year, the edcap meeting schedule wound up on numerous occasions, voting for more frequent...
Wound up, yeah.
So just, a correction?
Could do be.
Oops, that was all that I came up with, thank you.
Any other corrections or changes? Seeing none, all those in favor of separating the minutes as corrected, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? So it's six, zero, one, Tom Keneck abstaining. Go ahead, let's see, you, you had, what, six weeks off? I'm trying to think, 'cause the July...
Since the last council meeting?
Yeah.
It's been a long time.
Long time. No wonder he's spunky tonight.
I wanted to go to the last meeting, but it was scheduled.
I know, it's all my fault. I know, it's all my fault. Okay.
Absolutely. You're charged, you own it.
Okay, comments from the press, seeing none. Comments from the public, seeing none. Comments from the council. I do seek counsel. Bill?
Just very quickly, the executive committee of the NRPC has narrowed down a candidate. They are waiting to make an offer to this candidate to become the executive director. Not at liberty to obviously divulge who that name is, however, if, if the individual does accept, I could not be more thrilled at who will be taking over the NRPC. So I look forward to an announcement that the offer's been accepted so that I can share that information with the, with the council.
Excellent.
Okay, other than that, thank you very much.
May I ask, Pete?
I just wanna, we had our Parks and Rec Committee meeting last night, and Matt brought up that they had eight hundred and ten enrollments for Camp Natickook.
Wow.
I thought that was a pretty impressive number, so, it's a lot of kids they're taking care of.